I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Township of Howell Planning Board, Thursday, May 9th, 2024. Eileen, opening statement, please.
Thank you. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 5th, 2024, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 5th, 2024, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 5th, 2024, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano's been excused. Mr. Greenfield?
Here.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse, I believe is going to be late?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, I have not heard from. Mr. Rebel, I have not heard from. Councilwoman Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Pike?
Here.
Mr. Carbonic?
Here.
And Chairman Husser?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and take a moment of silence for our men and women serving here and abroad?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First and foremost, I apologize for my appearance to the applicant's attorneys and members of the public. I'm coming off of baseball field coaching, so it's not my normal attire, so I do apologize for the hat and hooded sweatshirt.
Before we do anything?
Yes.
We need to have a motion for a new chairman? So if we can do that first before we even start everything else?
May I? I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nick Huzor as our new chairman.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cristiano's not here. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And now we need another motion for a vice chairman since you're no longer the vice chair.
I'd like to make a motion for Joe Cristiano to be vice chair.
I don't know if he can-
Can we do that if he's not here?
If he's not here?
Yeah, he can.
Yeah?
He can.
Yeah?
So you know that's the way you do it. Somebody's not there, you appoint them.
Yeah.
Talk to-
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna make a motion as well. I could do that as chair?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion for Mr. Mercer.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second for Mr. Mercer? Okay, Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now we can proceed with the rest of the agenda.
Okey dokey. We'll move on to approval of minutes for the regular meeting of February 15th, 2024. Eligible voters: Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Carbonic, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
You're not eligible.
You can't.
Second.
Mr. Leggio?
Thank you. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next are the regular meeting minutes for March 21st, 2024. Eligible voters are Mr. Mercer and myself.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And the last is for the regular meeting of April 4th, 2024. Eligible voters: Mr. Leggio, Mr. Mercer, Councilwoman Fisher, Ms. Pike, and myself.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Leggio, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Pike?
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, any vouchers?
I have no vouchers.
Any correspondence?
Correspondence, I have six ordinances that I sent out yesterday for consistency with the master plan, and they are scheduled for public hearing and adoption on May 21st. So we kinda have to comment on them tonight because our next meeting is probably being canceled.
Okay. Did everybody have a chance to review?
Quickly today.
Yeah?
Hello, John.
Okay.
For the farms?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Bean?
Yes, sir.
How do you feel about that?
I think they are consistent with the master plan. They are all related to farmland preservation and farming, so I think that they are consistent with our overall master plan.
And that one is for stormwater? You want to do that separate or-
The storm is separate. I would do that separate.
But we can vote on all the other five together?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I read them. They're fine.
So ordinance 02413, 14, 15, 16, and 17, we can have one motion and a second and a vote on them.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the farmland ordinances. Mr. Greenfield, and a second?
And I'll second.
Mr. Mercer for the second?
Thank you. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And then the separate ordinances, the stormwater, Jen?
So stormwater is mandated by the state.
Right.
Yes, it is consistent because our ordinances are always, for our master plan, it's always advising us to be consistent with the state and county, et cetera. So yes, it is consistent.
Okay, any questions? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Greenfield?
Second.
Second. Mr. Leggio?
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Eileen?
For correspondence, I don't have correspondence, but Mr. Pape is here, and we have one application at the end of the agenda. It is for Mark Chikotano, case SD-2991A. That is going to be rescheduled to June the 20th, and Mr. Pape is going to notice, so.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we respectfully request that that application be heard by the board on June 20th, and we'll renotice and republish for that date with permission. Is that acceptable?
Acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. And that's all the correspondence I have.
Okay. Resolutions. Case number SP 1035 for Josh Van, Two Clayton GV LLC, formerly known as Joseph Wilhelm. It's a resolution granting three one-year extensions of time. Eligible voters: Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Carbonic, and myself. Do I have a motion to memorialize?
I'll make a motion to memorialize.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
Husser.
Mr. Leggio?
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
And the second is for case number SD 3009, Augustine Kim. A resolution granting minor subdivision with ancillary variance and design waiver relief. Eligible voters are myself, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Mercer, Councilwoman Fisher, and Ms. Pike. Do I have a motion to memorialize?
Make a motion.
Mr. Leggio, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Pike?
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. As we get into the meat of the agenda, I did want to make one announcement to the public, which I'm sure people are here for. The, it's number nine on our agenda, the area in need of redevelopment hearing, which is a public hearing. That is going to be heard last after the applications before the board. We do have three applications, but it will be heard tonight. It's just going to be last on our agenda. So I just wanted to make members of the public aware of that. Okay, for submission waivers, first is case number SP 1122, 32 Sutherd Avenue LLC for a preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance relief.
And Mr. Vidello?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Michael Vidello. I'm a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey, and I am representing the applicant on the matter the chairman just described. We're here tonight for submission waivers, and we'll turn to those very quickly, but just in short-
Well, typically, Counselor, how we do it, we defer to our professionals, Ms. Newman, on these matters, and she can summarize rather quickly.
Yep.
I'm happy to proceed in that format.
Okay.
Chairman, you want me to swear?
Yes, please.
Do you swear from the testimony about giving before this court it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item three of our review letter dated April 5th contained the submission waivers. The only one that I would like to see submitted for completeness is the 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis. That's typical that this board requires that. So that's the only item for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Okay, thank you. Is that acceptable?
So, Mr. Chairman, that's a good question. So we've gone through the submission waivers. Many of the items we have now, and we can just submit, so we don't need those waivers. There's one item we'd ask for as a condition of approval, the maintenance and protection traffic plan.
So, Mr. Vidello, I guess-
Listen to what you're saying.
The only item we were going to request a waiver for is that item, and my engineer can explain very briefly why we think-
And again, this is not, we typically do not have engineers testify at submission waiver hearings. I took no exception to the granting of that submission waiver. I would ask that the supplemental items that they've indicated they have be supplied to the board, and upon supplying to the board secretary, we can then prepare a memo. But until they're supplied, the application would be deemed incomplete. I take no exception to the granting of waiver 86 for maintenance and protection of traffic plan.
Okay, understood, Mr. Chairman. We'll provide it.
Okay.
And we have no other questions about the other items that were mentioned? That's fine.
Okay. Any questions from the board? We could just take a vote, right? We don't have to-
We need a motion and a second?
Yeah, we don't have to.
No.
I just need a motion for approval and a second, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Mercer and Mr. Leggio.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next submission waiver is for case number SD 3011. I apologize in advance, Blizenyuk Properties LLC for a minor subdivision with ancillary variance relief. Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Jackson on behalf of the applicant.
Ross, I'm in again.
Want to just defer to Laura?
Do you swear from the testimony about giving before this court it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the submission waivers similarly are outlined in item three of our April 2nd, 2024 review letter. Because this is a minor subdivision, it has, you know, it's creating two lots, one of which will be future development. It doesn't prompt major stormwater regs. So for those reasons, I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Great. Any questions?
No.
I will entertain a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion?
Councilwoman Fisher and Ms. Pike.
Motion and a second. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick and easy.
No objection.
Thank you.
And the final submission waiver this evening is case number SP 1123, SMC Properties LLC
for preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary and variance relief.
Do you swear from the testimony about giving before this court it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, similarly, item three of our review letter dated April 12th, 2024 does contain the submission waivers. This application previously had a use variance before the zoning board that was granted, but they're proposing something now that's permitted. I do want to see submission of an environmental impact report, even if it's per the prior one. Again, the 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis as well as a woodlands management plan. They previously had had a woodlands management approval, but it appears clearing activities may have exceeded that, so I would like to have that information prior to the application being deemed complete.
Counselor, is that acceptable?
No problem.
Great. Any questions from the board? Again, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Pike, and a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mercer?
Motion and a second. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
All right, on to the applications. The first is case number SP 110496 Industrial Court LLC for a finer, final major site plan. Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, boards professionals and public, good evening all. This is a request for final site plan approval of 96 Industrial Court. This was a small warehouse building that was approved by this board in July of 2023, and since that time, Peter Strong for Crest Engineering has been working with your professionals on resolution compliance, and we're prepared to report to you on outside agency status. We did notice for this hearing. I would ask if the record could reflect that our notices have been received and that they are in order.
They have been. Thank you.
Thank you. My presentation is very succinct. This is the exact same application that we presented to you during the spring and summer of 2023. There are no changes other than resolution compliance has been the work product of Peter Strong. County Planning Board approval is in hand. County Health Department approval is in hand, and Freehold Soho Conservation District, we're in that second review. We expect to have that permit shortly. Mr. Strong, if you could, Mr. Strong is the professional engineer and planner who testified before the board. If he can be sworn, I'll ask him to confirm the accuracy of those statements.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about giving before this court it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please tell us your name, spell your last name, and use your business address for the record.
Peter W. Strong, S.T.R.O.N.G., at 100 Reich Drive in Millstone, New Jersey.
Mr. Strong, would you confirm that your professional licenses are still in effect and that are in good standing?
Yes, I can. Just read them.
And, Mr. Strong, I made representations by Crest Engineering working on resolution compliance with the board's professionals' accurate statement?
Yes, it is.
And there's a report that was issued by CME dated January 19th, 2024, identifying some technical requirements. Can you advise the board that you are familiar with that report and that you can and will address those outstanding comments to the satisfaction of Ms. Newman?
I am familiar with the report and will comply with Ms. Newman's presentations.
And, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have nothing further on direct. If you wish for a more detailed presentation, we're prepared to, but our representations are that this is the final version of the preliminary that this board approved.
So, Mr. Chairman, do we, yeah, sure.
It applies for all of us in the hearing in general, right?
Right, if we swear in one time, you're going to go the night.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, you're going to swear us in for the whole night, right?
Yes, that's fine.
All right.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about giving before this court it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I can confirm that our report goes through the conditions of the preliminary approval, specifically noting some of the items that remained ongoing, or whether or not the comments were completely satisfied. There is no additional relief being sought with this application. That was previously granted relief, so there's no additional relief, and the applicant has agreed to the technical comments which remain in our review letter. So with that, basically, they were tasked with coming back with final after the preliminary, and I take no exception to the representations made.
Okay. Jen, do you have anything?
There's nothing for me.
Sherry?
No.
Okay. Questions from the board?
We've heard it before.
John?
This drive, this is the same application that empties out of the Vandevere, correct?
Yes.
This is the, yeah, the industrial court.
And empties out of the most favored, empties out of the Vandevere?
Ultimately.
Or going towards the-
Up towards-
It's industrial court which goes to Vandevere.
You guys have your own driveway, or you're connecting with the rest of the court?
This facility has its own driveway that goes on to industrial, then industrial goes out to Vandevere.
Okay, so this is the same application I, last time, or a couple times ago, I don't think you were here, one of your colleagues was here. But the issue I have with this application is the truck, the tractor-trailers emptying out to Vandevere Road heading towards Howell Road, okay?
Okay.
Just bear with me, I'm not going to-
Oh, I'm sure.
All right. At the intersection of Vandevere and Howell Road, tractor-trailer's not making that right-hand turn onto Howell Road with the, with the way the angle is, and making a left onto Howell Road heading to 524, you know, County Road, for a tractor-trailer to head down that way to make a right or a left, but they'd have to cross over the links. We discussed this last time. I remember this clearly, okay? And I think I spoke to the other attorney about making the egress and egress, ingress and egress, so the trucks only could come in from Bennett and leave towards Bennett, so that way they get to Bennett, make the left, go up to Fairfield, make another left, and they go up to Route, and head up to Route 33, whether they go west or east, okay, without going on these other roadways that are very narrow, no shoulders, and in my opinion, unsafe for tractor-trailers, okay? And you also know that Howell Road's a four-ton road. So that's, you know, that's only, I think, it's been explained to you a few times, that the tonnage doesn't matter if it's not going to be enforced, okay? But I'm asking you, as a board member, looking out for safety concerns for the buses that are on these roads three times a day, morning, you know, afternoon and evening, and just residents in that area, if we can get the flow to go to Bennett Road out to Fairfield Road and off to 33, that's the better scenario because that's the more, you know, that area of it has more commercial stuff going on, and it's a quicker access to Route 33. I just have an issue with the Vandevere intersection, and I have an issue with the 524 intersection with a big tractor-trailer, okay?
By my, the, the application is for this piece of property solely. All of those roads are municipal roads under the control of the municipality. Any restrictions or limitations on movement on those public roads wouldn't come from the applicant. The applicant-
Ken, I think what he's asking is the applicant can provide some kind of assurance that this is a spec building, correct? You don't have a tenant?
I don't know.
Right? So, at the end of the day, if, can you advise your tenants, right, and I think Mr. Leggio understands that we can't control everything, right?
I understand it.
But can you advise your tenant of the routing that the board would be preferential to regardless of the fact that it's, it's a township road, given the concerns? I understand it's a permitted use, it's an off-track concern, so it's a bit of an ask. We understand that, right?
If they-
We're asking if you can ask, as your building gets tenanted, if you could advise your tenants that that's the preferential route from the board.
Advising tenants of a preferential route of the board is something we can do. Controlling the intersections, something we cannot do.
Hundred percent understand.
But we could make that-
Right?
I agree, Mr. Bean, 100% I agree with you, but that's why I'm taking it a little further, Mr. Pape, and asking you, would they, would your client be willing to make the entrance and exit there, they would have to only come from Fairfield? They want to be all willing to do that?
That's not something that we, all of the parameters of this application were established in preliminary. We'll agree to abide by all of the parameters of preliminary, and if notifying the tenants of the preference is something that's important to the town, we will, but that's as far as we can go.
So the traffic studies are-
I mean, it's gonna, the driveway's coming out onto industrial, so industrial is an existing intersection, so I'm-
No, no, but I'm saying, when, Jim, when they leave there in that one direction, if they go up Vandevere.
I get, I get it.
If that's dangerous?
I, I understand your concern, 100%.
So it's on the record?
But I think-
Yeah, I just want to make sure. You know, it's on the record.
Just looking out for safety.
And in the future, if there's, if there's an accident, then-
So they've committed to making that a recommendation of their tenants. That's probably as much as we can ask.
God forbid there is an accident, which we don't want.
That can be memorialized in the final, and we'll make sure that it's enforced.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, I guess at this time, I'll open it to members of the public that have any questions regarding this application. If anybody's here, please come up. Don't all run at once. Yeah?
Good evening, Mark. Pre-C2 Castle Court. I came in a little bit late. Did we address the issue as to whether or not that statute regarding weight-restricted roads and whether or not trucks can pass on a weight-restricted road as long as they're not stopping or starting or not trucks can pass on a weight-restricted road as long as they're not stopping or starting on that road? Because I know there was something in their traffic study, and I remember when we were here on preliminary, that that came up, and I remember with, there was a conversation with Mr. Cuchero on the board about how you guys are going to have to take a close look at that, and their interpretation as to whether or not a truck can travel on a weight-restricted road is insofar as they're just passing through. And as, as a resident of this community, knowing the kind of development that's going on in this community, if we allow an industrial development to allow tractor-trailers to travel on weight-restricted roads, as long as they're not starting or stopping on that road, just cutting through, does that mean that any other industrial development that's going on in this town, those users can say, hey, our tractor-trailers are going to cut through that residential road that's weight-restricted, but we're not stopping, we're not delivering anything, we're just going to cut through because it's quicker to get from point A to point B? Are we really opening up, like a Pandora's box here of problems?
I can respond to that.
Yeah, Mr. Pape, please.
Oh, sure. You want me to finish my comments, or do you want to respond now?
Oh, oh.
Go ahead. No, come on. The, the issue of weight restrictions is dealt with in both ordinance and statute, and at the preliminary hearing, the question was brought up, is the ordinance that's in place and/or the statute that's in place that places weight restrictions on a roadway, does it affect the trucks that are going to a specific designation along that roadway? We provided the ordinance, we provided the statute, and you also had some interpretation from Mr. Cuchero, and also Mr. Howard weighed in, and pointed out, in your ordinances, it expressly states that the weight restriction does not apply if the truck is going to a designation along that road. And they went through all of the existing warehouses that are on industrial that behave in that, in that manner. There was a, it was more than a discussion, there was a determination that that ordinance and statute were in place. Thank you.
So is it my understanding that as long as they're not stopping on the road, they're allowed to travel on any road they want, whether that, that's weight-restricted?
These, in order to travel on this road and be over the weight that's restricted, you have to have a destination that is on this road. That's the ruling, that's the way the ordinance is, the statute is.
So tractor-trailers that are coming or going to this facility, that want to travel along Howell Road, can travel north and south on Howell Road unrestricted? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the, that's the, that's the law.
That, that's the law.
As long as there, there's a destination on the road, the weight restriction does not apply.
But the destination here would be on industrial court?
If they started on industrial court, the destination could be anywhere. As long as they start or stop at this location, they can travel on that road. And unless we're planning on having like a scale on the road, which I highly doubt we are, you know, I understand your concern, Mark, but at the end of the day, this is final, not preliminary, and we've gone through this, as long as they're stopping or starting at this location, they can travel on the road regardless of the weight.
Okay. That's a little bit concerning. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I just thought it went...
All right.
In, in hearing Mr. Leggio speak, I just want to remind the board that the board can impose whatever reasonable conditions that you want. So if you want to impose a condition as to the movements of the trucks leaving this site, you absolutely have the authority to impose that reasonable condition.
I totally, I don't agree with that, because this is an off-site intersection. That we, we are tasked, this is a permitted use, it is here for final. We are tasked with site safety at ingress and egress, which is on to industrial court, and that's why, as Mr. Leggio aired his concern, we said, look, we can ask. The agreement was that they will advise their tenants of the preferred travel to not go towards Howell Road.
That's our...
I don't agree that we have the ability to take jurisdiction of an off-site intersection. We are tasked with site safety at ingress and egress at this site.
That's determined by the county, correct? Monmouth County, or is that by the state ordinance?
With that, site safety at ingress, that's the municipal land use law.
Municipal, okay.
Listen, Mr. Mercer, at the end of the day, the warehouse is permitted, which it is, it's owned. The owners, I don't want to say you guys don't care about the residents around the place, or the roadways around the place. As a board member, as a Howell Township resident, okay, a lot of movement on those roads with buses and kids and everything, just the whole thing. I am just looking out for the residents. As a board member, doing my due diligence to ask the right questions. If you answer the questions, you answer the questions, all right. If you don't want, if you don't want to, you know, pass that, you're going to pass it on to the applicant, that's fine. But at the end of the day, he probably doesn't live in town, and we don't even know what's going to go there anyway, everybody says that. And it's just frustrating to be sitting up here and listening to these applications, and there's no, there's no concern for what surrounds the applications, okay?
So I, I have to interject respectfully. This is a permitted use in the zone, so that sentiment needs to be projected towards the governing body. These guys, the zoning is the zoning. They don't have to worry about what's around there, because it's a permitted use. So in theory, the concern for that was contemplated when the zoning was put in place. This is not a use variance, this is not a zoning board. That is not something they have to prove to you. It's a permitted use. I understand your frustration, I do. But this is, they are not, they are complying with the zoning, and the zoning is permitted. So therefore, they don't have to worry about what's around them. That's not their obligation. Their obligation is to comply with the zoning, manage safe ingress and egress, as Laura said. That's it. What's happening down the road is not their problem, because the zoning has allowed for this. That's the law. I, I understand what you're saying.
It's not their problem, it's the residents' problems.
Well, and that, that's a, that's a comment that's not relevant to this board, because you cannot factor that into your decision. And if, if that's a concern of yours, you need to consider whether or not you can impartially evaluate the application, because you cannot consider that. That's not allowed as a planning board member. So that's something that the governing body took into consideration when the zoning was put into place. And, and that's your bound by that requirement. That's how that works.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I will close the public portion. Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, I have been coming before this board for the past forty years, and I think, those of you who've worked with me know, we don't come to anywhere near this board until we have spent time with your engineer and your planner, with your fire chief, with your environmental commissioner, your shade tree commissioner. We, we, as a rule, take very seriously our responsibilities, and our clients, or as a rule, take very seriously all those responsibilities. We don't come before you, even asking for preliminary, until all of those outside agencies have been addressed, and we bring all of that with us. We did exactly that here. This is an application that was vetted by every one of those agencies before we asked for preliminary. This evening, it's a final, consistent with preliminary, and respectfully, we'd ask that you consider the application favorably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
Yeah.
Mr. Mercer, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Carbonic?
Motion is second, Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
All board members, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Okay. Our next application is case number SP 1114, Lowe's Company, Inc., for an amended preliminary and final major site plan.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board and board professionals. This is Pape of the firm, Heilman Pape, on behalf of your applicant, Lowe's. Before we begin, if we could confirm the quorum of eligible members?
Yes. There's Mr. Greenfield, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Mercer, Ms. Pike, and Chairman Husser. We're here at the last hearing, and Mr., excuse me, Councilwoman Fisher and Mr. Carbonic have certified.
Thank you so much for doing that.
So you have seven voters.
Thank you so much. This is an application of Lowe's to amend their site plan to allow certain limited activities to take place in their parking lot. There are activities that had been taking place, and were brought to their attention by Mr. Howard and the fire officials, that they were not properly approved. The application that we're about to present to you was, was filed. I'd ask again if you could confirm receipt of our notices for the hearing, and confirm that the board has jurisdiction.
The board does, and they were received, and they're in order. Thank you.
Thank you. The presentation will be a succinct presentation. Mr. Kevin Bulger, who is our professional planner, will be our lead witness. He'll describe what we're doing on the site. We have Maurice Rashid with us. He is a traffic expert. He'll confirm that the parking lot remains more than adequate. And Christine Kofon is our professional planner. There is some variance relief that's associated with our request, and although it's, I think that it's important, it'll be brief testimony on that point. And with your permission, we'll right to Kevin.
Sure.
I think we need to have Kevin sworn, have his credentials made part of the record, and we can go into his prepared presentation.
You can sit at the table, there is a mic there.
I do. My name is Kevin Bulger, last name B-U-L-G-E-R. I'm with Petrillo Architects in Park Ridge, New Jersey.
Could you share your professional and educational background with the board?
Yes, I serve as project manager for the Lowe's account at Petrillo Architects. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I have a bachelor's in landscape architecture from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner, AIC pre-certification. I have my licensed landscape architect in New Jersey, and my licenses are
We will accept your credentials.
Thank you. I'd ask, welcome to the set. I know that you have prepared statements to exhibit that the applicant will rely upon has been placed on your screen. I'm going to ask, Kevin, if you could take us through the revisions to the parking lot that our client has requested.
Sure. The proposed site plan before you tonight was revised subject to the comments received at the last public hearing on this application, and through several follow-up site inspections thereafter on my behalf. And those revisions are as follows. The parking spaces have been enumerated to more clearly verify the number of existing parking spaces within the Lowe's parcel only. Two of those prior parking spaces that are adjacent to the handicap area have now been shown correctly as just striped areas and no longer spaces. Under the additions and modifications key, outdoor storage area one has been updated to indicate the types of product being stored there. Also, under the additions and modifications key, the number of parking spaces being utilized for each outdoor storage area has been added to each area. And under the parking key, the symbol for car corral has been uniformly changed from just CC to an X, and the number of parking spaces utilized for the car corrals, ten of them, has been added accordingly. The location of the car corrals is shown for my, are shown as per my last site visits in January and March, and as of today, they are in the same relative positions. And the existing shed display area nine is now shown on the plan. And the parking summary table has been revised to reflect all these changes. Regarding overall parking lot circulation, the only proposed change in site circulation will occur on a temporary basis when outdoor storage area one is in use from March 1st to July 15th. That is the larger section at the bottom of the sheet. The eastern section of this parking bay along the perimeter site will become a one-way travel lane, entering from the west and exiting to the east and north. And there will be entrance-only and exit-only signs placed at each end to direct customer traffic accordingly. All the outdoor storage areas that we've identified and enumerated are as follows. Temporary seasonal sales area number one is for bagged goods and garden center products, with typical products being bagged mulch, soil, and garden stones, as well as pavers, retaining well block, and live plants. And please note that all business sales transactions for these products will only occur within the garden center checkout counter and not at that location. Permanent garden center product area storage number two is for the overstock of other products sold in the garden center. Storage area two A is the sod-covered area located adjacent to area two. This is an open canopy structure for the protection of stacked sod. The pro parking area three, under the lumber canopy, this area had changed from originally a two-way, a two one-way customer pickup lanes to one drive-through lane, and now four angled pro parking spaces. Area number four, the closed drop-off bins area, that was originally proposed to be removed. They have since obtained a permit for those bins, and we will talk about that later by the store manager. The pro parking for trailers area number five simply provides for longer angled parking for contractors that tow a trailer. This better controls this type of customer parking that is needed. Permanent outdoor storage display and pickup area six is for fence panels, fence posts, picnic tables, as well as an area to display utility trailers. Curbside pickup spaces area number seven, this designates six spaces for customers who buy online and need quick access for the product pickup area inside the store. Permanent plant shipping cart rack storage area eight is for the temporary storage of empty plant display carts until such time they get picked up on a periodic basis. And permanent shed display area nine is for the display of various shed models. Regarding area eight, the empty plant shipping cart rack storage area, this is on the south side. It is curbed, preventing carts from straying into Mills Lane Road, and all the carts have wheel locks as well, preventing any wayward movement. And regarding all of the outdoor storage of products, they'll be no higher than eight feet high, except for sod storage area A, which is an open canopy structure with a center peak at approximately nine feet high. With respect to the overall parking counts, there are currently 729 parking spaces existing per the recent restriping. There will remain 612 parking spaces after all of the displacements for outdoor storage. Those displacements are as follows. Ten spaces are occupied by car corrals. Thirty-two spaces occupy storage area number two. Eighteen spaces occupy storage area number six. Eight spaces occupy storage area number nine. Forty-nine spaces occupy storage area number one. That's a total displacement of 117 spaces. Therefore, during the high season, when all outdoor storage is, is operating, 612 spaces will remain. During the non-high season, 661 spaces will remain. And our traffic engineer will testify as to the efficiency of the number of remaining spaces to meet the demand for parking. Regarding parking lot dimensions, the typical parking space still remains nine feet by eighteen feet. The typical parking lot drive aisle still remains 25 feet wide. There are 10 pro parking spaces that are a little wider now, 10 feet by 18 feet, to help accommodate the pro parking contractor. The angled parking spaces are 11 feet wide by 35 feet long, and the parking spaces, the pro parking spaces under the canopy are a little wider at nine feet eight inches by eighteen feet deep. Regarding the parking spaces reserved for veterans, there are four...
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Pape, yeah.
I think Laura can probably cut through this, because...
I, I was just going to have a que, I mean, this is basically what Lowe's has been doing for years, correct?
Yeah.
And you're here for the planning board for approval, correct?
That's right, Laura.
Okay.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, this was previously heard.
Yes.
The one issue that we had, right, the issue that we had was twofold. One, I had a site distance issue at the driveway to Lanes Mulrow Road. That has since been fixed, the stock bar has been changed.
Yep.
The only other issue we had was what was the number of parking spaces?
Right.
What was it going to? So if, if, if Mr. Bulger can just confirm that 830 spaces are required, 729 spaces essentially exist, we'll go to 612 spaces with the seasonal area. And so, you know, I, there's a witness that's going to testify that that's adequate, and I think we could probably move forward from there.
With handicapping consideration?
Yes, there, I mean, you'll hear, they have the correct distribution...
The total number wasn't known last time.
That is correct. It was, it was a discrepancy, yes.
It was all over, right.
Correct. And I think that was the only issue that we needed to confirm, as well as I had requested that I wanted the site distance issue immediately fixed.
And it's met now.
All fixed.
And they removed the sheds from the site as we had had concerns over. So I'm not sure what more the board needs to hear with respect to this, because I think the issues that we had outstanding have been addressed.
Yes.
Um, so I would leave it to the board as to whether or not there's additional testimony you need to hear.
Yeah, I mean, anybody have any questions? Correct.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm very comfortable where you're comfortable.
Yeah.
We came with additional witnesses, if you wanted to hear them. I have only one point of clarification. We had early on indicated that the closed bins would be removed from the site. That was a corporate decision of Lowe's, only to learn that the closed bins are on the property with a permit issued to the P A...
The P A L.
And their permit is valid and in place, so they said, please do not take away our closed bins.
Okay.
So we revise our request to leave the closed bins on the site, and if you're comfortable with the adequacy of the testimony, then we are comfortable with the adequacy of the testimony.
Got it.
We are prepared to go further if requested.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone?
I, I think I'm comfortable. Laura, are you good?
I'm comfortable, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll open this up to the public if anybody has questions about the Lowe's application. Close the public portion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, respectfully, we would ask that you consider the amendment to the site plan as shown on the plan submitted and as outlined this evening by Kevin. We respectfully request that you consider the application favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mercer, motion to approve. Do I have a second? Mr. Leggio, a second?
Motion is second, Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Good night, Mr. Pape.
Okay, and to our last application this evening is case number SP 112Z Carmine Caruso, preliminary and final major site plan approval with ancillary variance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
I'm already interrupting the efficiency of the board tonight, so. Although at this point, I think the new chairman could move to have the salaries tripled for everybody.
It's not even a coffee and a dog.
Mr. Collins, if you want, you can sit at that table.
Do you mind if I sit, Mr. Chairman?
No, not at all.
Yeah, the speaker works.
In the middle of the table.
Can you be heard on that?
Testing, testing.
Yeah, just gotta speak up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dennis Collins, I'm from the firm of Collinsville and Casello. I have the responsibility this evening of representing Carmine Caruso and his wife for property commonly known as Block 233, Lots 13 and 22.01. This property is a, Mr. Caruso owns several properties right in this location. This is a property that is on the northbound side of Route 34, and the last property in Howell, our contiguous neighbor to the north, is the Earl Naval Weapon Station. Many, many years ago, a man named Mr. Paul Schneider, who was on this board, who was a longtime Land News guy, was arguing with me that we weren't in Howell. So we're, we're, we're here this evening seeking further final site plan approval for a, what is a international dealer that we are partnering with in construction and farm equipment, which is a permitted use in the zone, with me this evening, or several witnesses. But I know you have a public hearing after us, so we'll just give me a heads up when I'm ruining the time.
Sure.
But I will start with Mr. Andrew Comey, who is our principal engineer, who will do the bulk of the testimony. I do have an architect, a traffic, which is more just five minutes, and then I would end up with, as Kefon is our planner.
Correct.
So I would ask that Mr. Comey be sworn.
Just to confirm the testimony that you're about to give before this board is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, another of the truth?
I do.
Just tell us your names, by your last name, give us your business address.
Andrew R. Comey, C.O.M.I. I'm with Kennedy Consulting Engineers. That's located at 211 Maple Avenue, Red Bank, New Jersey. I have appeared before this board, but it's probably been a dozen years.
So why don't you, why don't you give the board the benefit of your educational background, your license credentials, and the experience that you've had testifying as an expert in civil engineering before a board?
Certainly. I, I am a graduate of Rutgers University in the field of civil engineering. I have 20 years' experience in land development engineering projects, both residential and commercial projects. I am a licensed New Jersey professional engineer and have testified before many boards throughout the state.
We will accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind, I'm gonna just ask Mr. Comey to be talking narrative form.
Sure.
Be a little bit more efficient. Please interrupt us at any time to ask questions in case, so you don't lose your spot. So I would just ask Mr. Comey to give a general information about the site itself, surrounding uses, and then delve into the various aspects of our, our application. As I indicated before, we, we are partnering with an international firm. I can't tell you exactly who they are, but you see yellow trucks, you see green truck, equipment, you see red equipment and blue equipment. It's a nationally known dealer, but for whatever reason, they don't want me to say. But everyone will recognize it. Go ahead, Mr. Comey.
First, I'll introduce an exhibit to describe the existing site. That's the one up on the screen. I do have small-sized versions if, if anyone's interested. Up to you. It'll take just a moment.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you.
As everyone can, can see it on the screen, I'll.
Andrew, do you have any others?
Of that aerial exhibit, I have two.
I just, no, I mean, any other exhibits?
One, one other exhibit.
Mark them all at once?
Sure.
An exhibit?
That's correct, that's the second exhibit. All right.
So, so, just finally to the board, if you've ever been by, it's next to the Caruso Excavating Companies, which I'm sure the board is familiar with that, on the way to Delicious Orchards. On the way to Delicious Orchards or somewhere where you're going, up North 34.
We like Delicious Orchards.
Eileen, would you flip back to the, the aerial exhibit?
Yeah, the aerial's gonna be marked as A 22.
Yep.
And the site plan rendering is A 23.
The aerial exhibit is prepared by Kennedy Consulting Engineers and is dated March 21st, 2024. It has an aerial date of September 6th, 2023. The project site, which is highlighted in red, is on Route, Route 34 northbound, just north of where the Route 33, 34 highway split. The site is in a highway development HD3 zone and includes two lots, which total 7.65 acres. Both lots are in Block 233. Lot 2201, which is the smaller of the two lots, is 1.49 acres, and that one has frontage on Route 34. And Lot 13, which is the larger lot, is 5.16 acres and has frontage on Titten Falls Road to the east, or to the rear of, of the site.
Excuse me one second, can we just let the record reflect that Brian Tannenhouse is president? Sorry about that.
Chairman, if I may, since Mr. Tannenhouse just showed up, I know the testimony just began, so if like, if you wouldn't mind, maybe you could just quickly overview what you previously just said.
I just. Thank you, I'm sorry, family emergency, I hate to deal with. But, um, excuse me one second, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
Remember, we didn't, we didn't proceed because we didn't have a quorum last time?
Got it.
I don't, I wanted to say that to the attorney, but you remember?
Yeah.
Did you have a conflict though, Brian?
Do I?
I don't know.
You said last time.
Oh.
Yes.
I do.
I love, same guy, a guy named Collins, was from the same tribe, but not a.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for pointing that out.
I didn't want to say.
No, it's okay, just be, be frontin' us, that's all.
Yeah.
I'll see you guys later, because I understand this is the last application.
Yes, but we do have the, the, after this application.
We have.
We have the redevelopment.
Oh, then I'll hang out in the, yeah, I'll hang out outside, you guys do.
Go play some Candy Crush.
Call me back in when we're done. Thanks, Brian.
Okay. The, the two lots we had, so Lot 2201, which is the one on Route 34, contains remnants of two paved driveways and asphalt that related to the former motel that was on the site, which was demolished about 15 years ago. And Lot 13, which is the one at the rear of the lot, is, is vacant, grass-covered and was previously farmed. There is an existing 45-foot-high billboard on Lot 2201 that's, that's double-sided and has a front setback of 14.8 feet, whereas 60 feet is required, and that's an existing nonconformity. Any questions on the existing conditions?
The board should be aware that the old Collinswood Motel was, was actually foreclosed on by the township of Howell. There was an oil tank, asbestos, all kinds of problems. Howell had approached us back in '08 to buy it from them and clean it up, which we did. And I thought I'd cash in on the development application a lot sooner than 15 years from now, but here I am today, today. So it's the old Collinswood Motel that kinda imploded.
It's all, it's all cleaned up then.
It's all cleaned up. We submitted our environmental statement, we've taken care of everything on the property.
Super fun site.
No, it's not too, it wasn't too bad, it wasn't too bad.
Okay, we'll move on to the proposed development. And Eileen, the colored, yeah, perfect. So this exhibit is entitled Site Plan Rendering, also prepared by Kennedy Consulting Engineers. It's dated January 23rd, 2024, and it's simply a colorized version of the submitted site plan. First thing I'll, I'll just point out is, you can see it more clearly on this exhibit, is the billboard located on, to the left of the hand side of the exhibit on Route 34. It's that V-shaped beige-colored object. That is proposed to remain with no changes. All of the other existing improvements, including the asphalt and fencing on both lots, as I mentioned, will be removed. So essentially, that, that sets the table for the proposed development. Next, you'll see, the first thing I want to introduce is the building, which is a 14,000-square-foot, single-story building that's proposed. It's set back 400 feet from the highway and includes an office portion that's 4,055 square feet and a 9,934-square-foot shop space, all of which will act as a single business, and the business is retail sales of farm and construction equipment. The office space is for the administrative tasks associated with the retail sales, and the shop space is, is to house parts and receive new equipment, where, where the employees would prep and service the equipment before delivery to, to the customer. Extending from the rear or the east of the proposed building is a 25-foot-wide covered canopy, that would be 2,500 square foot in area, and it's open on all the sides, only the top would, would be covered. In addition, an eight-foot-by-10-foot parts shed is proposed to be attached to the north side of the building, and that would be for late-night deliveries for, for parts. The building has nine overhead doors at the, on the rear and sides of the building, and a concrete apron around the same areas outside the, the overhead doors. And the architect can go into more information, more detail on the, the proposed building. Next, with respect to the proposed driveway, a single 45-foot-wide two-way driveway is proposed on Route 34, which will taper down to 30 feet as you move further into the site. A design waiver is requested for the width as we exceed the 24-foot driveway width requirement. And that's essentially just for safety. Large tractor trailers are anticipated to access the site to make deliveries, and the 24-foot width just wasn't safe. And our traffic engineer can of course go into more detail.
Mr. Comey, though, we did reduce the width of that, of that, that access point at the request of the professionals to ensure that we weren't proposing any kind of warehouse here. So it is a little bit bigger, but it's, it's designed not to be access for a warehouse.
Correct. We left it as 45 feet at the entrance, but it was 45 continuous, so we tapered that down to 30 feet as you move further into the site, so. Next, there is a, you'll notice that large gray area behind the building, that's, this is a staging area. It would consist of eight inches of gravel, and that'll be used where equipment will be kept and brought in from the manufacturer, manufacturer until delivery to the customer. And activities in this area will be temporary. A design waiver is requested as this area is not paved. We felt that gravel was a better design alternative, considering the heavy construction equipment that would be here, that the treads would, would tend to destroy a paved surface. And in addition, it's better for stormwater management to have the gravel surface. So that's, that's ultimately why we opted for the gravel surface. The staging area will be enclosed on four sides with a chain-link fence with privacy slats. On three of the sides, the fence will be six feet high with barbed wire on top. The portion of the fence to the south that, that abuts the residential Lot 12 will be 10 feet high with privacy slats with no barbed wire on top. The entire fenced-in area will have two. Go ahead. Yes.
Can we entertain something that's not chain-link? Because we don't really allow chain-link anywhere, and the chain-link with the slats is tacky-looking, and it never lasts, it always gets beat up. And then the barbed wire as well, we don't typically allow that either. Like, is there any alternative? I understand it's for security purposes, but can we entertain an alternative that is not so 1980?
Absolutely, but what I would request is that if the board were to grant us an approval, we could, to decide an alternative between yourself and.
Hundred percent.
You know, I don't want to say.
No, no, I don't think they should come back. I think that if the board is comfortable, we, between myself, Laura, and Shari, we can come up with an alternative that would be aesthetically more desirable, but still accomplish what they need. But chain-link with barbed wire is not a good look.
Well, we, yes, and we work, we are, we do have some residential neighbors, particularly in the rear, and we, you know, you'll see the plan, we did, we wanted to put a fence and buffer and all that, so we wanted to respect those neighbors on that road in the back, but.
Hundred percent.
We could certainly work with your office.
If that's okay with the board, I think that would be great, because.
Yeah.
We're trying to get away from that look. Thank you.
Some privacy security.
Whatever. Go ahead.
Yeah, but we do, obviously, we have multi, we have multi-million-dollar pieces of equipment back there, so we want to keep them safe. But we, we understand that. Be happy to work with the board.
Okay. The fenced-in area will have two access points. The first is a 24-foot-wide swing gate that's on the north side of the building at the end of the driveway. That gate will have a NOS box for fire truck access, and of course, we'll work with the fire marshal on, on the specifics of that. And the next is a 12-foot-wide double gate at the northeast corner of, of the fenced-in area, which is for maintenance of the proposed landscaped area along Titten Falls Road. So there's, that's why there's no driveway to that, to that double gate. It's simply for landscape maintenance. With respect to parking, the proposed use requires 26 parking spaces and 26 paved spaces are provided, including the two required barrier-free parking spaces located at the front of the building. In addition, one electric make-ready space is provided, which can be used to add an EV charging station in the future, and that, and that meets the, the state's requirements. With respect to signage, a proposed pylon sign, which advertises the name of the business, is proposed at the, the front entrance. The sign will be set back 20 feet from the right-of-way. It'll be 22 feet, feet in height, and has an area of 72 square feet, all of which comply with the township's standards. There will be two building-mounted signs. One is 10 square feet, will identify the business, and the smaller sign identifying parts access door is also proposed at the front of the building. There is a variance required here, as the ordinance says that businesses not on Route 9 or Route 33 are permitted only one type of sign, whereas three types of sign, including the bill, the billboard, the pylon sign, and the building-mounted signs are, are proposed. Refuse enclosure, 25-foot-by-25-foot enclosure is, is proposed at the rear of the site.
And that's a masonry enclosure?
Correct.
It's almost like Dennis has worked with me before.
We call that the Gen Beam Rule and dig balls. Sorry.
Yep, you're right, Dennis, a six-foot-high masonry wall.
I could've designed it myself.
Three sides of, of the enclosure is proposed with a double gate at the front. And we agree to relocate the enclosure outside the 25-foot side yard setback, as, as requested in the review letters. Trash and recycling will be by private hauler and pickup adjusted as, as needed. Site circulation, I touched upon, but the site's designed to accommodate garbage trucks, emergency vehicles, and, and large tractor trailers for deliveries. The trucks will enter the site, they'll have to enter the, the 24-foot swing gate and circulate at the rear of the site in that staging area before heading back out onto Route 34. And the Route 34 access is, is full movement, it can turn in, in both directions, and, you know, that, that's part of our NJ DOT application. Our, our traffic engineer can of course go into more detail on that. There is a septic system proposed at the northeast corner of the site. We already have approval from the township and Monmouth County Board of Health for the septic system. Similarly, private well service is proposed for the water service. Briefly, with respect to stormwater management, in the proposed condition, we are reducing the peak flow rates leaving the site, and we meet the state and local requirements for a major development. To help meet these requirements, at the front of the site, we propose a small-scale infiltration basin, which will be a dry basin, and portions of which are on both the, the two lots. Therefore, an access and maintenance easement will be provided between the, the two lots. The basin will provide detention, water quality treatment, and groundwater recharge before discharging to the DOT system, which is a pipe that heads due west under Route 34. With respect to lighting, there are eight proposed light poles. Each will have a mounting height of 24 feet. That includes four in the front portion of, of the site to light the driveway and the, and the parking areas, and four at the rear gravel staging area. There's also six proposed building-mounted lights, all of which will be downward-pointing LED fixtures, and there will be no light spillage beyond the property line. The lights will be placed on timers and be left on from dusk until one hour after closing, with the exception of the identified security light locations that would remain on all night. With respect to light levels, there are two parts of the ordinance that we do not comply with, and design waivers. with and design waivers are requested. The front driveway and parking areas do meet the ordinance requirement for the minimum light level, that's 0.3-foot candles, with the exception of the Route 34 curb line. NJ DOT has a requirement that light levels shall be no more than 0.1-foot candle at the curb line, so we needed to meet that requirement. And that's the only place on the site that we are below the township's minimum standards.
But in your opinion, this is the, obviously towards the interest in the driveway is important for lighting? Does it provide a safe environment for the vehicles entering or leaving the site?
It does. And the DOT frontage hat is also lit as well, but our proposed lights, we just, we can't add on top. We can't light, you know, the highway even more than it is. The second part of the ordinance we don't comply with is the average light level, which shall not be greater than 0.5-foot candles, and we average 0.9-foot candles, which isn't particularly high for a commercial parking lot, but we do meet the IES standard, which is a national lighting standard, which has a minimum-to-maximum ratio. We can try to lower the average, but we're requesting a design waiver in case we can't meet that township's standard. With respect to landscaping, in total, 60 trees are proposed, as well as 98 shrubs and perennial plantings. Existing tree removal will be very minimal as the limit of disturbance is mostly over the existing cleared and developed portions of the site. The wooded wetlands area to the south, which you see on the exhibit, is that large wooded area. It will remain, except for a minor amount of the buffer with which we are doing buffer averaging, whereas we're removing some of the buffer and adding additional buffer to that existing area. And we received a permit from DEP to do that. With respect to residential buffers, there's a 50-foot buffer proposed to each of the properties to the south. Those would be lots 12 and 21 identified on the exhibit. Each proposed residential buffer would be left as grass and ungraded with deciduous trees planted within that 50-foot buffer. Along the shared property line with Lot 12, as I mentioned, there will be a 10-foot tall fence, whether the material will decide, but it will be privacy. It will be a solid fence. The fence is actually on the property line and that requires a design waiver for having anything within the 50-foot buffer. Also, currently, there's one light pole that's a few feet into the buffer and that will be relocated. So the only thing within the buffer would be the fence and, of course, the planted trees that we're proposing. A variance is required for not having a second element to the buffer, including a six-foot-high landscaped berm. We did provide a six-foot-high berm along Titten Falls Road. You'll see, you'll notice that heavily-planted berm, but we decided to keep the 50-foot buffer along Lot 12 as natural, essentially, with those supplemental trees that are proposed.
So you're seeking a variance from the buffer, then?
Correct.
Yes.
And why?
Because we're putting a 10-foot-high fence, right?
We are.
Because we're putting the, we thought, we thought it was a better alternative to put a 10-foot-high fence on the property line so the landscape behind our fence, our neighbor would never see it. But.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's not going to cut it.
All right, well, if we need to add trees and supplement that.
I think you need a berm.
Mine.
I think you need a berm.
A berm, how high, a berm going to be higher than 10 feet?
The berm, it says six feet high. That's what the requirement is.
Okay.
So you put a berm at six feet and then you plant on top of it, it's going to go beyond the 10-foot?
Okay. I guess the board's not going to grant that waiver.
And I also would, and I also would say the term, and I would defer to Shari, but I think the term generously landscaped is a bit of an exaggeration. I think it's barely landscaped and it's going to need to be more heavily landscaped, to her satisfaction. I mean, if you look at the plan, it's not heavily landscaped. There's like five trees along that property line.
Okay.
Okay. That's all for proposed. I would just want to point out, I did review, of course, the board engineers and board planners' review letters and we can agree to address all the comments that we haven't mentioned. As far as outside agency approvals, we have almost all. We have our free old soil permit, Monmouth County Planning Board, our wetlands permit, and the DOT access permit is now conditionally approved. We're just waiting for that final authorized version.
Which we expect to be signed very shortly, so we're actually pretty much done with our outside agency approvals, correct?
Correct.
So that's all I have of Mr. Comey. Hopefully it was simple. I understand the position of your professionals and we certainly assume the board will support them and accept them. If there are any questions, concerns, or anything we can address?
So I have a question, Mr. Comey. One of the comments in my letter is moving the trash enclosure out of the side yard setback. You agreed to comply with all the comments in my letter, but where exactly are you going to put it?
Somewhere where it is now, just we would shift it to the south, that's all. There's a, we're within the 25-foot setback, obviously. I think we're five feet off the property line, so we'd likely shift it 20 feet to the south.
So should the board act in the affirmative? We would obviously need plans that addresses Shari's landscaping concerns, but also shows the relocation of the trash enclosure. I don't think, I don't think I have anything else. Go ahead, Shari. Did you ask for the waiver for the sidewalk?
Oh, we did. Along Route 34, right?
Right, I mean, I know you're asking for it, but did he testify to it?
No, I didn't.
No, I'm sorry.
We are not proposing, we would propose to contribute to the fund.
And then you also need the waiver to attach the sidewalk from the sidewalk along 34 to the facility, which I don't take exception to. I just want to put those waivers on the record.
Correct. And the reason we're not proposing that, there's no sidewalk along Route 34 in this area, so that's why we did not propose it.
I mean, I agree with you, but that's not really generally, we don't really generally care whether there's sidewalk in the area or not, but I don't think we want to advocate people walking along Route 34, especially in this location. So I think the waiver is appropriate.
And we always appreciate Ms. Beev reminding me, I'm not on my game, Mr. Chairman, so.
I think that's all I have.
I don't think you mentioned, did you mention the waiver for the five-foot strip along the right-of-way?
He, I'm sorry, he did, but Christine was going to address it, but we could start, he can, Andrew can comment on it.
Sure.
If you feel comfortable, sure.
Yeah, well, we are requesting that waiver, five-foot strip along the right-of-way. No particular reason, we are proposing street trees along the Route 34 right-of-way. We just felt that the right-of-way is significantly wide and more so than the usual 10-foot, which actually goes back almost 40 feet into the site. We started to look out of place.
Right, so it looks like the tree at the north can be moved into the site, right? So that one can be in, within the property limits? And then I think you're missing at the southern corner, that area of street trees?
You'd be looking for those trees that line up with the red, the red quote, property line, essentially.
Right, we like to have them, you know, inside the property line, so in the future they're not removed.
Okay, okay. We can look to rearrange those, yes.
So let's relocate the street trees to within the property, is that what you're saying?
Right, yeah, not in DOT. And then, then you're asking for the five-foot waiver. I mean, you know, you can just put connecting shrubs in between. It doesn't have to be, you know, from one shrub to another, but typically we like to see landscaping along the frontage.
And we certainly have no objection, because that would be part of any condition, which say that as directed by the planner and the tree expert, and Ms. Newman, if she wants, you know, to supplement landscaping in appropriate places and direct us accordingly. So hopefully that would be subsumed in it, but.
Well, I would just say, Dennis, it's relief or it's not relief. So I think Shari's saying is comply.
Oh, so the compliance is just putting the trees on our property instead of in the DOT right-of-way?
And the five-foot strip.
And the five-foot strip.
Got it. Then we're good. We'll comply.
I have a question, if I may. Where are you putting the company sign? Because I see it, I don't see it on.
The architect will show it. We should be able to identify it for you, but are you talking about in the front or the on the building?
Look on the screen.
If I could, Councilwoman. No, the 22-foot.
It's.
Look on it.
Look on the screen.
If you look on the screen, I could show you. It's right here.
Right in front of the tree.
Okay, so then why keep the billboard? Or do you have to keep the billboard?
Oh, it's not, it's not really, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a different one. Well, so let me, and just to be certain, the professionals talked that before I was going to encapsulate it. What happened was, years ago, I came in and got a billboard approved when the Township of Howell approved billboards throughout, and I did five of them, okay? Two of which were on Mr. Caruso's properties, one on the north end, one on the south end. Because the town rescinded that ordinance following our approval, there was a concern that we would have, we would have, we have a lease, we can't just tear it down, but we would have two principal uses on one site. So we didn't, what's called merged the lots for this application. We just can't take the billboard down because we have a contractual obligation to keep it. So some of the variances in some of this, and one of the things we're going to ask you to do, if you were to approve it, is condition it on, the site needs to function as one, so we're going to do cross easements. But it's really just the billboard is there, I can't, we can't take it down because we have a contract with somebody. So that's why we're here. It was, it's really a legal fiction to keep them separated on the lots, but it would have put us in front of a zoning, the zoning.
How long is the contract for?
I think it's like five or six more years. Not worth the money at this point, but we, you know, back in the day, we were putting billboards on people's property, it was the second use on the site, but because the ordinance was rescinded, I agree with Jen's position that it created a principal use on the site, but it wasn't treated that way back when we came, back then. A lot of lawyer gobbledygook, but.
Service in the area. There's no intention to take it down, right?
We can't.
I can't right now, yeah. Well, if we, if we could rent it, yes, we'd like to keep it, but it's not, it wasn't crucial, it's not killing it.
No reason to have to come down.
I don't think so. I don't think in engineering, there's no safety issue. I don't, I don't think the planners care, you know.
Not, not since the, there's no intention to consolidate the lots, so lots are going to remain separated.
They have to remain separated.
So they're going to have cross-access easement to allow access to the site, but the lots are too separate, so.
You're fine with it.
I don't have a problem with it, especially given where it's located on Route 34.
But Mr. Caruso, keep the sign and make his money.
I have no issue with it.
He won't let his lawyer advertise on it, I don't know why.
Well.
He doesn't want to see my face anymore than he has to. If there are any further questions from Mr. Comey, I would.
I had a couple, so, just that gravel area, did we talk about the lighting there? What's being stored there?
Well, nothing's being stored there, I'll just say. That's the staging area for the prep of the construction equipment, just temporary. There is four light poles at the perimeter of that gravel area and building-mounted lights at the back of the building as well, but it's not lit to a parking lot standard, it's not for parking, and it will not be in operation at night. So the lights are there just, you know, to provide some perimeter lighting, really.
What do you mean prep of the equipment?
Well, what happened, I could ask you that. What happens in this type, it's not, it's not really like a car dealer. When these, this equipment comes, obviously, it comes on huge trucks, it's empty, so when the architect will show you, that's part of the setup, there's, they fill it with fluids, they do various things. So there's a large prep area for those large equipment. That's what the manufacturer does a lot of the work outside.
So that.
Some of these machines are tracked, track machines, and they got to get loaded up the lowboys to leave the site, correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Canopies, yeah, canopies installed.
Yeah, technically, we have a service department, but as you can imagine, most of the service happens on-site, you know, because they don't bring their tractor, you know, their bulldozers in.
The gravel makes sense because there's no way to asphalt the vehicles, the trucks.
I would just ask, if the board were to act in the affirmative on the application, given the proximity to wetlands, et cetera, that you submit some kind of like spill prevention plan in the event that any of those fluids are, were to spill and then potentially run off? And then perhaps have some kind of like timber tie around the gravel area to make sure you keep it correct?
Yeah.
One other question, you have a gate that's proposed in this area, if you look at my cursor, just what's the purpose for that?
Yes, just for landscape maintenance, maintain the landscaped berm on Titten Falls Road. Essentially it.
So did we, just to cut through to the landscaped berm on the other side?
It's 12-foot gate, so, I mean, it's not like it's a small gate, that's why we asked the question. I have nothing further.
And then you have the septic design plans by others, so that's for future consideration?
No, well, it is proposed now. It has been designed and approved.
Okay, okay. With all the regulatory requirements, okay.
And that's all fenced in too? That's all up to, up to the standards when we want.
Got it, okay.
Is there natural gas service to this property?
Yes.
I believe so, yes. Along Route 34.
Got it. I guess my only question, just environmental is my background, and I hear well, and I know the surrounding areas have well water there, but there's a significant known groundwater plume in that area that's coming off of Earl and coming off the fire training areas. It's been announced numerous times over the past couple of years. Has there been any testing of the water on that property that's going to be used for potable?
Could I ask my client, that would be something I have to ask my client. Excuse my back. Mr. Caruso advises that he's actually, his next door.
Right.
His well water tested constantly, it's fine, but he advises that the well water individual said he'd have to go down at least 100 feet to make certain that he avoids any of the things that you, he or she, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to go on record at that because I know that numerous homes that had wells and, you know, they were provided bottled water and told not to shower, so.
So they got to go deep, that's what the chip said.
Yeah, yep, deep, cased off, probably treated. Other than that, anybody?
The entrance and exit will be covered by the traffic study?
Traffic, yes.
Yeah, because they're talking about going left and right on that. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm going to open it to the public just for questions relating to his testimony. No traffic yet because obviously that wasn't put on the record yet, but just to the engineering plans. I don't know if I have people coming up or people leaving. I have people coming up, all right. Come on. Yeah, yeah, it's just for questions relating to the engineer.
I think they still swear them in, but there's no, just questions.
Can you please state your name and your address? Oh, yes, please.
Just in case a question evolves in the testimony.
Yeah, usually I, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Who's going to, are each going to speak?
Well, I'm here because you want to sit on this side so I can.
Either yes or no, you guys are supposed to speak or one person can speak.
I just need this for you.
It'll be me.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear in front of the testimony about, you know, for the sport, it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Please tell us your name.
My name is Mary.
Your name and give us your address.
My name is Mary Lee Parisi. Her surname is Mary Lee, space in between, Parisi, P-A-R-I-S-I.
And your address?
My address, mailing address, my own is 12607 Darla Avenue, S. Los Angeles, 91344.
You never.
I am the executor.
Can you just speak into the microphone, please?
We never have once someone come from California. Do you own property near here or take care of property near this?
I'm a neighbor.
Okay.
Mr. Caruso's neighbor.
Yeah, could you just point out where you, do you live in California or you live in the house?
I live in California. So I am the executor, Mary Lee Parisi, executor to the estate of George I. Parisi, owner of block 233, lots eight and nine.
Okay.
We are original owners from back in 1954.
Okay.
So we are in the back.
In the back, right?
On Titten Falls Road.
Yep.
I think some of, some things were already.
Yeah, you have to speak everything into the microphone, please.
Just speak loud for the mic.
Okay, so something came up in the discussion just a minute ago.
You can pull that mic down because we have to get you on the record, thank you.
All right, now I can hear me too, all right. First item I want to discuss is the gate entry on Titten Falls Road. I understand now it's for the maintenance, is this an in-house maintenance?
I understand now it's for the maintenance, is this an in-house maintenance crew that needs to come through the property to that buffer area, is, or is this an out, somebody hired out?
Actually, we don't know, it'll be up to my client at some point, but he, he is in the construction business, he's the guy right next door.
Okay.
It's really to gain access and not having to go down your road, it's trying to gain access from our property to that area on the other side of the.
So what kind of equipment, are we talking about a lawnmower?
Just, they require, there's a required landscape buffer, and what, what usually happens on another side of the, it's on the other side of the fence, right?
Yes.
What usually happens on the other side of the fence is it doesn't get taken care of the right way. Mr. Caruso, as I'm sure you're aware, is incredibly neat and concerned about the appearance of his property, so he cut a gate in there so he could get back there and, and maintain it properly.
Okay, well, my initial thought that a gate is unnecessary to come through, just to.
Well, if there are trucks going down the Allentown Road and parking on the road, but we thought it would be nicer to be, keep on our property and not go on your road or near your property and.
It's a, it's a large gate, that's why I was asking.
So what's the concern? I mean, it's not even on the public street, it's between two private properties, it has nothing to do with the public road, so what do you think is going to go between them? They've represented that it's for landscaping maintenance. That would be, that would be a condition of any approval of this board, so what is the concern other than that?
I was, I needed clarification on the purpose that, you know, lawnmowers were going to come out, I'm just curious what that was for.
So that's, that's what the purpose of that is for?
Check that off. All right, the, the next item is on page four of the site plan, the berm. The berm along the buffer wall should be at full height, six foot, it, it tapers as it gets to the north side, should be completely at the same height all the way through.
Is that your professional opinion?
I'm reading the code, so.
The issue with doing that, I mean, Mr. Comey can testify to it, Mr. Comey, can you build a berm that could reach a max height of six feet with the property lines constraints? I mean, the issue is you can't grade on adjoining property owners, so in order for them to get the grade where it needs to be at the top of the berm, it doesn't continue all the way down. I think as was indicated by Ms. Beam and confirmed by our tree expert, they have to add additional trees, but they can't put a six-foot berm right on a property line because they can't grade it that way within their own property lines, but I would ask Mr. Comey to testify to that.
I think if we were to go up the full six feet, it would be more like triangle shape, I would say, we could look to, to raise it slightly, but the reason it's, it's kind of tapering down is that's how the, the slope of the site is traveling from south to north, and that's, that's really why it looks a little different on the south end versus the north end.
So the trees that are planted will, the tops of trees will go lower and lower as it gets to the north?
The trees are, are going to be planted at the usual six, six or seven-foot height, and they'll, they'll reach a much, much higher mature height. I, I don't know exactly the, I can go through the, the plant lists and, and go through them, but it's a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees.
Right, okay, so, so we won't have as much of, of blockage of what's going on beyond more toward the north?
I, I don't agree, and I think, respectfully, I think the applicant testified that they're going to increase the landscaping in this area to comply with the tree experts' requirement, so I don't think there's going to be a problem with blockage.
That, that was my concern.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, fencing, Jennifer, I believe you already mentioned the chain link situation.
Yeah, no, they're not going to put chain link, and there's not going to be barbed wire, so you don't have to worry about that, it's not happening.
Some kind of wall, ten foot, ten foot's requirement?
Ten foot is, is, is permitted, but we're not going to allow the chain link with the slats, and we're certainly not going to allow those barbed wires, so we're going to have to come, and the applicant already agreed to work with us to come up with a suitable alternative that would be more aesthetic, which is our concern, and, but they also have a security concern because they have expensive equipment, so there's, it, it has to work for both.
Okay, check that one. Lighting, the lighting, was it zoom marks?
The brand, yes.
Yeah, I just want to get to the page, page five. So the, the lighting should be non-spreading and downcast, but these particular lights, they would need to be capped, all right, so the twenty-four.
Ma'am, are you a lighting expert, or you're just?
I had a planner go over this.
Okay, so you're testifying based on someone else's advice to you?
Well, they, they are downcast, but I have pictures.
Right, but, but respectfully, right, this is questions, and you cannot provide information based on someone else's opinion, because they have a right to cross-examine anybody that comes in here, so you need to ask questions on behalf of you, and you cannot opine based on somebody else's opinion because he has a right to cross-examine whoever it is that gave you that opinion, and they're not here, so you cannot do it.
Okay, so are the, so as reference, are the lights that are going in the same as lights that already are in on adjacent lots, so for a reference for?
I, I don't know what lights are on the adjacent lots.
Okay, so the issue is lighting that should be downcast and non-spreading, okay?
They are.
I can show you pictures.
That's not helpful because the site's not developed yet, so you can't show me pictures of what they're putting in. We have plans of what they're proposing, which is consistent with what our requirements are. What's there now is irrelevant because what's going to be there is not what's there now. So I, you know, then you should be happy that those lights are coming out and these new lights are going in, but.
No, no, I mean, as a reference, as a type of lighting that exists at a neighboring property, as a reference.
No, neighboring properties are irrelevant, this is this site only, what's happening around you, around it, is irrelevant to this. This is this site, this site only, the plan showed downward-facing lights, they've been reviewed by the professional, they are, they are downward-facing, they don't spill over onto the neighboring properties, so what's happening adjacent is not relevant to this procedure.
May I ask if we're going to be able to see the light coming out, or is it going to be with, you know, visible like a streetlight?
As we all see streetlights, so that's.
There's a picture of the lighting, the picture of the lighting is up on the screen. So, I mean, I'm sure you're going to be able to see it.
Yeah, just like.
You know, there's nothing that would prevent that.
But ma'am, it's a hundred feet from the prop, from your, the property that you don't live in, but that you own or have an interest in, but it's, it's.
I have tenants, I have tenants.
Okay, so you don't live there, okay, you're not, it's, it's going to be a hundred feet, those light poles, you'll see them, probably.
I'll see, I'm going to see the lights, so.
And I just want the board to understand too, this is a permitted use, and what they're asking for is not, like, they're not asking for major relief, they're allowed to light their property.
Do, do lights need to be on twenty-four-foot poles, could they be on seventeen?
That's what we allow.
Yeah, it's allowed, it's allowed, but the intention, the intention is to provide security lighting, as Mr. Comey testified to.
Could that be, and, and add more for more lighting for you, so we don't see up and have that?
No.
No, no.
The trees will cover?
Nope.
The trees will, of course, grow very tall and, and will help to block your, your view of any, any light. I will say that those two that are closest to Titten Falls Road were not proposed to be the security lights, so those would turn off one hour after closing, is what I testified to.
All right, so they would be, it would be dark after sunset?
In, in, in that area, around the building, we have, is where we have our security light, so that's even further, further away from that easterly property line.
Okay.
After, one hour after closing, and.
Which is, well, what are the operations?
Can't say.
Nine, ten, maybe, latest.
And there's, and there's late-night deliveries, I heard you mention.
Could be, could be. There's no, there's no prohibition as to when timing of deliveries are, you live next to a, a property zone for this, but, you know, that means people have to be there and various things, so it's not expected to be, it's not a normal operation.
But the, but the town has a noise ordinance, and you agree to comply with the noise.
Hundred percent.
Which is ten o'clock, correct?
Quite as simple as ten o'clock, it's fifty decibels at ten o'clock for fifteen minutes or longer, so if something drops at ten o'clock higher than fifty decibels and it lasts a minute, that's not in violation of the noise ordinance.
All right, so, so, and a closing comment here, I do need to mention.
No, no, questions only, the comments are later.
Oh, okay. Oh, the mud, all right. The issue with the drainage, is there some kind of drainage plan, so, because Titten Falls Road does pile up with water and mud?
Okay, so as was testified to, they are fully compliant with the DEP Stormwater Management Regulations as well as the Howell Township Ordinance as it relates to stormwater runoff. Quite frankly, there, there would be minimal water at all leaving the site to go to Titten Falls Road, it would have to be less, anything that's going there would be from the berm, but everything is being directed towards thirty-four, that's where the basin is.
That's taken care of?
It's compliant with stormwater regs as, as required by state and ordinance.
Yes.
Yes, we'll open it up.
I'll save it.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to leave your stuff, because if you're going to come back up, I mean, as long as you don't mind, I mean, rather than clean everything up, if you're going to come back up, you already have it organized.
You want to leave it here?
Yep.
Is there any other one, any people from the public that want to, just questions for the engineer? Okay, seeing none.
So, wow, I asked Ms. Verderese to come in.
Sure.
This is our traffic engineer.
You swear in front of the testimony that you're about to give before the sport, it's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Estellion, expiring license, gives you business and business.
Nicholas Verderese, V-E-R-D-E-R-E-S-E, 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey. Oh, yeah. I know that Nick's been here before, but if you want me to go through his credentials or is the board?
He's good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So Nick, you know the drill, explain to them what our thoughts were, why we went out thirty-four, why we didn't go out the back, and, you know, what, the status of our approvals, et cetera. Yes, so you already heard the status of the approval, so we're at the finish line at NJDOT, we have draft permits that were submitted back, so we've addressed all the technical comments, we're just waiting for final sign-off, we anticipate that within, probably within the month. As far as driveways, this has all been vetted at NJDOT, you heard conversations before about the widths of the driveway, the radii of the driveway, all of that, that was all worked out with NJDOT, with the turning templates for the largest vehicle to ensure that vehicles would not have to, you know, slow down significantly to get into the driveway and potentially create issues with, you know, traffic traveling along Route 34. The reason we're not on Titten Falls Road, the obvious reason is residential uses back there, from a traffic standpoint, if you follow Titten Falls Road down, it, it hits thirty-three, thirty-four there, opposite where the, the U-turn is, we pulled crash data there, there were about a hundred and fifty crashes in that intersection in a four-and-a-half year period. It was probably the most crashes I've seen at an intersection in my thirty-plus years of, of doing this, so we didn't want to send any more traffic there, DOT agreed, because typically, the type of road this is on, they would typically like to see what they call an alternative access, but they were comfortable not sending traffic on Titten Falls Road to that intersection. Crashes along thirty-four, we looked at that as well, so we looked at the existing site next door just to get an idea, in that same four-and-a-half-year period, there were only, I think, four or five total crashes, maybe one rear end and three right angles, well below any, you know, any criteria for, you know, thinking there's an issue that you, you would need to correct. Sightlines from the driveway, we looked at that as well, we provided an exhibit to NJDOT to show them that the sightlines were there, the right of way is really wide, so it was easy to get a clear sightline in that location, the requirement there for fifty miles per hour, fifty-five design is six hundred and ten feet, we have excess of that in both directions. We did do a traffic study, so we did traffic counts along thirty-four and the neighboring driveways, just to get some volumes, to understand existing conditions, then we projected traffic based on NJDOT and, and the Institute of Transportation Engineers. This is not a heavy traffic generator by any means, it's only falls, and it's not a, what DOT would consider, consider significant, a hundred trips or two hundred trips for a major we're planning, so, again, we did a traffic study, we showed good levels of service at the driveway, we're pretty much done on the DOT end, yeah, I think we've done a nice job, we put the driveway purposely at the far north end of the site, I'm sure everyone's familiar when you're on thirty-three, thirty-four and it splits, you're coming around the curve, we wanted to be as far from that curve as possible here, so that's what we were able to achieve. And the DOT had no issue with a left turn or a right turn out of our driving? No, no, there's really wide shoulders actually along the frontage, so anyone stopping waiting to make a left turn in, there's an easy bypass there.
I think it's more the left turn out.
Yeah, how about a left turn out? A left turn out is fine, it works at.
Because it's almost like where the road starts to split.
Yeah, I mean, left turn out is fine, as long as you have clear sightlines, and, and there's gaps in the traffic stream, which, you know, we showed by the traffic counts.
This is tricky area, whatever, because what, what, what your plan did, moving that road up there.
Yeah, it's not on Titten.
Best in there could happen, because anybody that, they use that U-turn every day, JB's diner, right there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
There's crashes in his parking lot, every single.
Sure, agree.
It's tricky right there, but they're farther away from that.
Yes.
And it's the, that's the best solution that you guys could come up with.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's actually all I have of Nick, I mean, we were way down the road on that, so hopefully we thought, well thought it out, at least he did.
Anybody have any questions? Traffic? I'll open it up to the public for questions regarding traffic only. Seeing none.
I would call Mr. Cop, nice name, I would call Mr. Collins, noting that we're from the same tribe, but we're not related here.
Mr. Chair, I would just ask, are you, do you want to hear architectural testimony? I know the applicant would be more than willing to work with my office to make the building compliant.
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't necess, I, I don't mean to rain on your parade, but, I know you're going to work with me anyway, and they're comfortable with that, so I'm just trying to, like, make sure.
No, unless you have any questions or concerns, I mean, we will, you know, with all due respect, we understand that Jen has, I know that Jen has certain issues with, you know, blank walls.
She'll tell you what she wants.
What's necessary, so we'd be more than happy to be willing to work with you.
I'm going to do what you want, just so you understand.
He does, I work with him in Titten Falls, and I am the same me in Titten Falls that I am here, so don't worry.
You are going to do what you want.
Thank you, thank you.
So I would, the last person though, who I believe is the most important, is Christine Cofone, she's just going to wrap it up and just go through the variances and waivers we have, we are requesting, and I think that you all know, Ms. Cofone, so.
Yes, I do. Yes, thank you, good evening, my name is Christine Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E, business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701, I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner, I've testified here in Howell many, many times and before, over four hundred and fifty or so planning and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, I sit as an affordable housing special master where.
You're good to go.
Mr. Briglio Duro sits with me as a hearing officer.
Nice to see you, Mike.
Yeah, good evening.
Apparently your counsel this evening is one of her favorite lawyers.
Yes.
Before tonight.
Yeah.
So Christine, can you just go over the variances and waivers and whether C1, C2?
Yeah, so Mr. Comey identified all the variances and waivers for you, and I know you have, you know, you don't want to hear a lot of testimony, I'm sure, tonight, because this is a substantially conforming application, the use is permitted as of right in the HD3 zone, and we really need no bulk variances, no bulk variance relief for the size of the building, what that means is this building complies in all respects with the setbacks, the coverage, the height, and the scale and intensity that was envisioned for the HD3 zone. The variance relief that we do need was. The variance relief that we do need was identified by Mr. Comey, and I'll run through it really quick, just so we're aware, but we need a variance for the setback of that existing billboard, we need a variance for the signs, because we don't have frontage on 33 or 9, we're limited to one type of sign where we have three, the billboard, the two-building, and the one pylon sign. We are asking for some variance relief for the fencing in the buffer, but we did eliminate the request for the chain link fence as well as the barbed wire, based on the comments of your planner, so we are also asking for, to the extent it's required, the berming, we did agree to work with your planner, we're certainly providing landscaping and meeting the intent of the ordinance there. So, I think, and the accessory structures, we do have accessory structures in our front yard, we, right along 34, we have some basins located in the front yard, so that's the variance relief. In addition to that, we need some waivers, Mr. Comey went through those, we needed waivers for the width of the access drive, I think he addressed that sufficiently and told you with the type of use and nature of this property, we need a little bit more than 24 feet to comfortably get our trucks in and out comfortably and safely, we need the waiver to introduce the gravel onto the site where the ordinance requires the paving, that again is for the long-term maintenance of the property, and he also indicated to you that that was a little bit better for stormwater management in the area, even though we are far below the impervious coverage permissible in the HD3 zone, still a betterment for the site, right? Why have impervious coverages that we don't need? We are asking for the lighting waivers as well, for the average lighting levels, and then, as was testified to at length, those will be down shielded lights, and they will be turned off from one hour after closing from dusk, so certainly no issues with our lighting plan. So, I think in this case before you, you can grant the variances under the C2 section of the statute, in that the board can find that there is sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, that's criteria G. Criteria M also takes, talks about an efficient use of the land. When you look at this application, it's a little bit, when the lots collectively form a little bit of an irregular lot shape, and I think the application that you have before you efficiently lays out the site and does so in a way that there's no substantial detriment to the township's zone plan or the ordinances here. When you look at the stated purpose of the HD3 zone, it is to provide for highway development along highway corridors that will provide a balance of social, economic, and cultural opportunities for residents while maximizing existing transportation and other infrastructure along the highway corridors. Given the proximity of this site to the regional transportation network, this is an excellent location for this use in its zones as of right. Further, the 2023 reexamination report here in Howell talks about creating a stable and diverse economy and looking for new businesses and economic opportunities, so I think that when you look at the applicant in totality, that there will be no substantial detriment toward, to the zone plan or the public good, and that the development of this site in conformance with the HD3 zone actually implements your 2023 master plan and certain goals and objectives found therein. And I think the waivers meet the intent, you know, certainly the intent of ordinance.
And then, but that includes our agreeing to those conditions with respect to the supplemental landscaping, fencing, et cetera.
Of course, and those conditions were to work with your professionals in the event there was something lacking in our architecture, we understand that there is no other option other than satisfying Planner Beam on the architecture, we've been here enough times to know that, if Beam's not happy, no one's happy. So, the plans will be, if not acceptable in their current format, I think they're, they do comply, but if there's something where we're missing the mark, we will absolutely, as a condition of approval, work with Ms. Beam's office and all three of your professionals, Ms. Spiro, Ms. Newman, and B, we will satisfy them, that we will put the landscaping along the frontage in that five-foot area, in the five-foot right-of-way strip, we will make sure that the landscaping is suitably located as well as suitable types of landscaping in the buffer areas. I think, I don't disagree that along that southern property line, we may be able to do some additional enhancements as suggested by Planner Beam earlier, I think to the east we look pretty good back there, I think we have a nice amount of landscaping, but at any rate, as a condition of approval, we will certainly work with your professionals.
Mr. Chair, I don't take exception to any of the testimony that's been provided, I think, given the location of this site, I think if this proposal was somewhere else in town, I think maybe we would be a little bit more worried about the traffic or whatever. I do think also it's important to note that they entirely have a right to access Titten Falls in the back, which they're committing not to by putting the berm and the fencing and the landscaping, so it's to direct all the traffic to the state highway, which is where it should be. The relief that they're asking for is de minimis in my opinion, and the waivers, I think, have been sufficiently testified to, I take no exception to what they're asking for, I think that this use, even though, I get it, it's changing what is on the property currently, but I don't think it's that intensive a use that it's going to be impactful at all, and again, similar to what I had to say earlier about 96 industrial, it's permitted, right? So, we don't, we really can't discuss potential impacts off-site because the zoning allows for this at dislocation, and I think that the testimony that's been provided more than justifies the relief, they've committed to working with my office, Laura and Shari with respect to whatever outstanding engineering issues remain, as well as supplementing the landscaping to Shari's satisfaction, which we always require, I take no exception to the application as presented.
Okay. Any questions? No, seeing none, anybody from the public? Planning questions? Seeing none, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that would be all I have unless, subject to the public comment.
Yeah, I'll open it up to the public again, this is for testimony now, so of any of the, or comment, I'm sorry, on any of the testimony that was discussed this evening.
My turn again.
Since you're already swearing, we're not going to swear you, but just tell us your name again.
Mary Lee Parisi.
Actually, just for the public comment, and I just, if I could just dovetail to Ms. Beam, I would just represent to the board that Nick was a little bit kinder, there was a lot of pressure to go out the back, we thought that that would be too detrimental to the neighbors, they're going to get their berm, they're going to get their landscaping, so we thought that was worth the fight, and that's why we were at the DOT earlier than you would expect, and we were so far along with the DOT, because we thought the board would agree with us, and, you know, and the roads they're going to leave on, there's not a lot of Howell Township roads they're going to leave on.
That would have never worked, going out Titten Falls Road.
Oh, it would have been insane.
I agree, I think it would have been a very different opportunity.
Yeah. Pitchforks behind us. But we, but the DOT doesn't usually take that into consideration, so I want to make sure that you knew that we worked on that, you know.
The DOT said they were going to do that intersection like 1975, we haven't come back.
Certainly, absolutely.
Still a disaster.
Crazy.
Well, John, you were concerned about that last time, you were talking about going out Titten Falls.
Oh, that is a death trap right there, coming over the hill. If you're over here in that area, you've got to be very careful, especially if you come out Titten Falls and get into the loop that goes north on 34, you better say, yeah, it's crazy over there, it's crazy.
Okay, since it's comment time, yes, my issue was the lighting, and from our experience on the property, that same or similar lighting does exist next door, I know what it looks like, we have an issue, my tenants are very upset, it looks like a football field, we are hoping that these trees do block and help with the issue, and they grow fast, that they rise above the 24-foot poles.
Ms. Parisi, I'm sorry, you have to keep facing the mic, otherwise.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can't be turning around.
Oh.
Not being rude, not talking.
Sorry.
That I, the issue with the lighting and that you could see the bulbs, you know, clearly, as we have this experience with the neighboring, same type of lighting, we understand security, and I do say, we're happy to hear that it will be turned off after business hours, but it is quite.
So, the lights that they're putting in though, they are totally blocked, the bulb isn't going to hang down below the, you know, the mounting structure.
Thank you, thank you, okay.
Yeah, it's not going to be like a, like you're going into a mall, a mall parking lot.
Yeah, like a Walmart parking lot, it's not that.
It's going, it's directed straight down for security.
It's more about seeing the bulb even so, you know, not just the downcast, but you can see bulbs.
Six-foot berm and probably like a six-to-eight-foot tree, so, I mean, that's, you know, that's what they're going to start at, start at, and then, they grow about a foot a year, pine trees grow about a foot a year, so.
You can imagine my concern, standing on the front porch and looking out at this and just waiting for it to turn off.
Well, you can't see it in Los Angeles.
Well, you know, I do have a home in New Jersey, so, I am back and forth, okay? I just want, I just want to make a comment, you know, we've been neighbors of the Crusos for quite a while, and we know he's in business, and this is how it is, and we've been enjoying our home in Farmingdale since the beginning, matter of fact, we bought the property, we, before my time, from the Lip and Cots, who are still our neighbor. Next door, we've had only two neighbors since 1945, and there's really only a handful of people in this very short Titten Falls Road. Matter of fact, nobody knows it's there unless you go into JB's Diner and you accidentally end up on our street, and we're still waiting for Google Maps to take it off as a, as a continuous road, because there is a fence from the Naval Weapons Base at the end of the dead end there, there was a time that was a gate, so back in the day, the guard would be stationed there, and my sister and cousin would go and flirt, as little kids try to squeeze through the chain link without getting caught. The convoy would come out, I think, Sunday afternoons, and we'd all line up on the street to watch all the trucks and jeeps come out. Nothing much has changed since back then, no one knows about this little stretch of road, we, to this day, even two days ago, just hanging around the house, you know, people walking their dogs, taking strolls, watching the sunset, it's almost just this time capsule, it's what we call, as we all say, going down the shore, we call it going down the country, and this is really what Farmingdale was about, leaving the city and coming to the country. So, we respect our neighbors, that they're in business, but there was a, a case, 9706 in 1997, there was a resolution with that case, the neighboring lot, and under the first condition that is recorded, part of that is, nor will any other condition be permitted to exist that would adversely affect the adjacent property owners, so I implore on you that, to limit any of the negative impact that would be for us that live, live on the property, my neighbors, and that we enjoy it as it always was, and we can live in harmony this way. Obviously, there is a, an expanding commercial business that is. There is an expanding commercial development next to an existing adjacent residential property, and we need to mitigate how these plans go in, so I'm just asking to take all that into consideration, there are, there are neighbors living and enjoying the area.
So, as far as us listening to the entire application and what they're presenting, right, we, I feel, and I must speak of our listener board, that their professionals and working with Mr. Crusoe and his team did the right thing by not going out Titten Falls Road, providing this berm, okay, trees, landscaping, you actually get more than what was on the plans, and to satisfy, hopefully, you and your neighbors. I'm sorry, you know, you don't feel that way maybe right now, but it's permitted use of this, you know, I feel they did a really good job, a lot of people will come in front of this board with all these, all their Ts crossed and dots, right?
Yeah, the main, the main was the fence, the fence was the. Yeah, and that's a big issue, and you jumped on that. Barbed wire, I mean, you know, we have it next door to that, so it's.
No, I get it, and, you know, that's not the aesthetic that we're looking for, I mean, we understand that there's a need to, for security, maybe some kind of, and I'm not suggesting a true jar offense, because I know that that's super expensive, but something similar, that I know you also need the visibility to make sure you can see if someone's in there, but something that's a little bit more aesthetic, which I think the applicant, you know, I know the applicant's team has worked with this team many, many times and knows that, you know, we're not going to allow something that's going to be to the detriment of the neighbor, so we will, we're on top of it, yes.
Okay.
That's my comment. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, closed public portion, any closing remarks?
Mr. Chairman, just, I hope that the board, Mr. Leggio indicated that we thought this through for a long period of time, it's something that we, even when you were, the zoning was changing, we were interacting with your professionals, we think we've proposed a pretty benign use for this type of zone, and I think it's going to be beneficial to the area, you know, there are far, plenty of farms still left in Howell, I represent Upper Freehold, which is a huge farming community, I think it's going to be, be a good thing for the, for the area, for the, for the days when you could sit on your front porch and smell the farmers, so we hope that we're, we're, you know, we're part of Howell, Chip has been part of Howell for a long time, and we're happy to be here, and we hope that you approve us, we know that, I'm sure counsel is taking care of the conditions that we discussed, and we're, we'll always be willing to work with the township to make things better.
All right, thank you. All right, that being said, yeah, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Leggio?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Greenfield.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries up.
Thank you very mu, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, congratulations, or sympathies depending upon the circumstance, hope to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to take a five-minute break, or do we want to power through? All right. Okay, so that's it for applications this evening, and we are going to now hear Ms. Jennifer Beam, it is the area in need of redevelopment hearing, I'll just describe it real quick, it's a public hearing to consider whether to recommend the Township Council that properties north of Casino Drive, Burgerville Road, southbound along Route 9, north of West Farms Road, I'm not going to go through the blocks and lots, but should be designated as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment. The area in need of redevelopment designation, if made by the planning board, shall not authorize Howell Township to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire any property. So, Jennifer, I will give you the floor.
Before you start, can we see if we can get Brian back?
Oh, yeah. Hey, Brian, let's go. That's how we get him back.
Do you want to swear me in for this?
Yes.
I do.
Jen, floor is yours.
So, the governing body approved a resolution to request that the planning board evaluate a corridor of Route 9, it's the southbound side from, I think it's the Florist, which is like just north of the Food and Tile Building, all the way through those little bungalows that are just north of Home Depot along the southbound side.
Before the apartment buildings were approved?
No, it goes past them, past the Markalite, Chapter House, CME, and then the Kentucky Fried Chicken, and then those little bungalows up to where the Home Depot site is. As you know, that section of Route 9 is, needs a little love, you know, there are definitely buildings along that corridor that, you know, could stand to be redeveloped in the, in the larger sense, so we undertook what we call an area in need of redevelopment evaluation to determine if the entirety of the corridor met the criteria. This is not to say that every single lot needs to be redeveloped, so for example, the bank and the pharmacy, probably the bowling alley, they're in pretty good condition, however, when you're looking at the corridor from one end to the other, it fits within that corridor. This was done as a quote-unquote "non," and I think, Nick, you indicated that in your summary, a non-condemnation designation, which means, so the law has. summary, a non-condemnation designation, which means, so the law has changed from what it once was, you know, I know there's been a lot of stress every time the word redevelopment comes out, given like what's transpired, like Long Branch and other locations within the, within the state. So now you have to designate from the beginning, when you do your evaluation, whether there's an intention to use condemnation or not. This has been done as a non-condemnation. So I want to state for the record again, there is literally no legal ability for the town to take property, period, end of discussion. It is illegal, period. Should the town want to implement that, we would have to start over, and that would be very clear in our, in our designation. So I know people get very nervous when this happens, but I just want to be very clear again, non-condemnation. We are not legally allowed to take property through eminent domain, illegal. This is also being done as an overlay, which means, this is going to, if this goes through, and I would recommend that it does, and I'll get to the details of it, if it goes through, this means that the town would create a redevelopment plan, which would be an overlay of the underlying HD1 zoning district, which means, any property owner within this corridor would have the benefit of the HD1 zoning, on top of which, they would have additional zoning options, and I can tell you right now, the town is considering mixed use along this corridor. So there will be multiple zoning options. Nothing would be taken away, no property would be rendered non-conforming, there'd be no negative impact to any properties, it would just provide additional opportunities for the property. There are, in the redevelopment housing law, a number of criteria for designating an area in need of redevelopment, and they range from, they're on page three and four of the report, I don't think I need to read them, but they go from A to H. And when we evaluated the entirety of the site, the criteria that is met ranges from A, which is buildings that are substandard and dilapidated, and I think we can all agree that there are a number of those buildings throughout this corridor. B, vacancy. There are definitely strip centers and other buildings along this corridor that have been vacant for a significant standard of time. C, municipally-owned property, not a ton, but there's a couple, but that, within the corridor, so they would meet that criteria. D, again, obsolescent. So it doesn't necessarily have to be dilapidated or vacant, but the design is maybe obsolete and is preventing perhaps a new, more recent use from utilizing the building. And H, which is, there are those properties within this corridor that by itself, standalone, may or may not meet the criteria, but because it's within the entire corridor and it lends itself to the corridor meeting the requirements, they were included instead of chopping this up. So from the Florist all the way south through those bungalows, and we have a lot-by-lot assessment in the document, which I'm not gonna read, and somebody has questions, I'm more than happy to answer it, but it's in my professional opinion that this corridor, especially, I mean, honestly, we may, we may look next on the northbound side, because Route 9 in the northern portion of town is very different from Route 9 in the southern portion of town in terms of development and what have you, and this would provide added incentive, it may provide incentives to bring much-needed infrastructure to this area, which has been a problem with the redevelopment of this, of this area, and, and create some incentives to jumpstart fixing some of these properties up. So I would respectfully request that the board find that this area be deemed in need of redevelopment, just because we, you know, it hasn't done it on its own, so the town has now thought, it's now time to maybe create a little additional incentive to kickstart perhaps some development opportunities.
I don't think you guys went far enough. I think...
I mean, let's go, let's, let's take it slow, okay?
I think the free with acre section, though.
I don't disagree, but I, I do feel like in certain circumstances, chunking this into manageable sections, because the other thing too is that when you're preparing the redevelopment plans, you know, it's easier to manage in manageable sections, and not all sections of Route 9 are created equal, and so it may be different development options depending on where we are. I agree with you. I think the entirety of the northern portion of Route 9 in both directions needs a little visiting.
A little.
Correct. But we're gonna start here, because like, the one that keeps coming to my head that I cannot get out of my mind is that Army Navy store. Like, that site needs something.
Well, it was gonna, remember the Cardinals, you're one?
I do.
And they pulled the trigger.
Correct. So I do think that we need a little bit more something. So that's kind of where, where this stands.
Okay. How does that, how does this then affect, you know, trying to bring sewer infrastructure into that space?
So there's, there's redevelopment, by deeming an area in need of redevelopment, it opens up financing options that are not available for traditional private property owner under traditional zoning, that perhaps the township, because the township would act as a redevelopment entity, so the township perhaps could investigate these funding options. You know, there's issues with franchise locations, and, you know, from what I understand, the sewer runs along Fort Plains, and all, all these lots are through lots to Fort Plains, so it does, it, it just provides the opportunity for the town to investigate options that they're not able to do on behalf of a private property owner currently.
So can, can say two or three of those bungalow lots, if one guy was, or person group was to buy three, could they combine all three lots and then make that?
Yes, but we're not there yet. This is just saying the area meets the criteria. The next step is to create the plan, which obviously there's gonna be public input associated with how that plan is created. One of the things that kept coming up, which we're seeing more and more, is a mixed-use concept, which, you know, I don't necessarily think along Route 9 is, is the worst idea. So I think...
Well, it's, it's all up, all up in Freehold, and they've already, they've already got a precedence, and I, I think they've been pretty successful in getting...
Ratables.
Well, not ratables, but by getting, getting it filled.
But the retail is also filling because of the population above.
Correct.
Yes.
You need the population to buy the pampers, and you need to have places to buy and sell the pampers.
But that's the next step. This step is just designating the corridor. That's step one.
Jen, if you have a property, like you stated, that in the corridor, that doesn't meet the criteria for any of this, just simply of it being in the corridor, it's okay?
Yes. So there is a provision that properties that allow for the totality of the area to be able to be redeveloped, they're allowed to be included. If you're doing it just that property on its own, no, but in the bigger picture, you're allowed to add those things to the betterment of the total corridor.
Got it. And is this gonna help with our next round of...
Yes. Maybe. Maybe. Depends. I mean, again, this is just the designation. The redevelopment plan is gonna do the uses and what's allowed, so that's the next step. We don't even get to that next step if we don't get over this step.
If I may, just to follow up on what Jen said, this, this is the first step in the process. If the board votes tonight to recommend that the governing body designate the area as an area in need of redevelopment, the governing body would adopt the resolution, they would send it down to the DCA, presumably the DCA would approve it, and once that's done, it comes back basically to Jen and to the board to start working on a redevelopment. But as Jen said, all the nuts and bolts, all the bulk standards, all the proposed uses and everything else, that's all down the road.
Got it. Got it. Good, Jen?
Yeah.
Yep, so I'm sure there's people that have some questions about this, so please feel free to come up to the podium, state your name and your address.
Good evening.
You can raise the mic, sir, so you have... Perfect, thank you.
You swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give before this board is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
Just for the record, tell us your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Henry Kazzirer, K-A-S-Z-I-R-E-R. Address is 531 Bennington Lane in Lakewood, New Jersey, and I'm the owner of the Fuda Tile property. I bought it a year, year and a half ago, and it is blighted, and I have just a few simple questions. Approximately, the process from today and if each, each next meeting is gonna be approved? Are we talking about a year, a two years, a five-year period?
It's definitely not five years. The town is definitely committed to moving this forward as quickly as possible, so the minute that, and I will say, I don't disagree with the attorney as far as like, if the board is to act in the affirmative, the resolution would probably be put on the next council agenda, correct, councilwoman? And then it would be sent to the DCA. The, the town is committed to moving this forward, so the plan is going to be prepared, like, immediately. I would say, listen, you know, you and I both know that the wheels of municipal government don't move quickly, so to say it's gonna be a couple months, I think would be disingenuous. Do I think it's gonna be five years? No. Do I think it could be done by the end of this year, or even this fall? I think, I mean, you guys, you're the, right? I think you're committed to moving this if this gets done. So I would say, we've already have some ideas in our head. Obviously, we're gonna reach out to the affected property owners to get additional ideas for uses to be included, should this go through, but I think that we probably would be in a position, what are we, in May now? May? We in May? Lost track. I think by summer, to be in a position to have the governing body introduce something, which would come to us for consistency and go back to them, probably fall for adoption. I don't, I mean, I don't mean to speak out of turn, do you agree with that?
I agree.
So I would say fall, and I, I mean, let's, you gotta leave a little wiggle, but we're not talking five, 10 years. We're talking, they are committed to moving this.
My, my point is, if I may, I, I don't think it'll be built physically for at least three years. I invested in my property, I want to make some, I have tenants that want to move in, and I'm asking the board if it's possible that if I am on board, certain waivers could be given to us, so I don't have to put in millions of dollars into the, the building existing, but I could rent it out for usage.
So that, I don't think that this board is the, the one that can say that. I don't necessarily think if there's a commitment, obviously, and I, I think we spoke, right? Your son, that's your son in the backyard?
My son, yes.
So he came, we had a, a, a meeting of the property owners, and, and he was there, and we discussed this. I don't think that the township would be penalizing you if you want to participate in the process, but these guys are not the right entity. But I will say, the town is committed to, to the economic development and the revitalization and the redevelopment of this quarter, so if there's things that you would like and you need, I definitely think you should reach out to Joe Clark, who's the manager, and to identify what those things may be, as well as Matt Howard, and Matt was at the meeting with me, as you know, just to see what exactly specifically it is you'd be looking for, and the town is committed to working with...
Well, maybe, maybe, Jen, what is looking for is just to know, look, if you do this overlay, am I putting money in this building, and then it's not gonna be worth anything because the overlay is gonna require something else?
It's not gonna require anything.
I don't think that's the...
Overlay is...
Right, that's what I'm trying to say.
Can I give you an example?
Yes.
The building is 48,000 square feet.
Right.
Right now. I, I, I put in brand-new driveways, I, I resited an entire building.
Right.
Looks brand-new now. I go in for my usage, I'm finished, I ask, where's my permit? Oh, we decided need a sprinkler system in the 22,000-square-foot warehouse, but it was at 11,000 square foot, but it was existing well of the whole time. So now, I'm gonna put in a sprinkler system, and a year later, I'm gonna rip it out.
That, that's kind of not really related to this at all?
That's, that's kind of where I thought he was going with this, that's why I wanted to get some clarification, Jen. I, I think what Jen's saying, correct me if I'm wrong...
I should take this over with the...
No, I think what she's saying is, is, is you have a right to use your building however you'd like to in the zoning that it presently is in. There is a thought process, there'll be some additional zoning put on top of that, that will, will enhance of what you can or can't do with the building, but, but you will never lose the right to do what you're, you, you need to do with the building today.
Hundred percent.
So like, so like, if you kept it retail, right, it can always stay in retail in perpetuity, but if, say, this overlay says now this area can have apartments, or whatever the case may be, whatever they come up with, well, now you have an added benefit that you could turn it into apartments somewhere down in the future, but if you make your investment in your building now, you're not losing anything in the future. You're only gaining more, more options.
And value.
And value.
System is a building code thing, it's not the board's...
One more question. Is there any plans of egress, for example, on my property, not from Route 9, from the side roads? I'm not sure exactly what are the planning because...
I mean...
If you drive through Lakewood, and on Route 9, the, the egress is impossible.
So that's a very valid suggestion, that's something that could possibly be incorporated into the redevelopment plan, which is the next step, to have cross-access easements and to limit the curb cuts onto Route 9, and I have, if it's appropriate, a hundred percent. It's definitely something we can take a look at when we get to that plan preparation.
Thank you, and I'm very excited about it.
Thank you.
You bought that property for my uncle.
Yeah? Okay.
Jen, what, what is the best guesstimate of a DCA turnaround on these things?
I have never seen them even respond, to be perfectly honest.
Really?
They only respond when they really have a problem with it, otherwise it's...
If you have 35 days, if you don't hear...
Yeah, they, I've never heard them come back. If the board, usually they leave the towns to do what they need to do.
Yeah.
You know, I think they only really get heavily invested if there's like massive objection, and then the, the town approves something, and then you have a whole litany of litigators that are challenging it, but generally, it, you know, if there's, if people are supportive of it...
Radio silence, you're golden.
Correct.
Got it.
So that's cool.
I mean, I just, yeah, I mean, I've done many, many, and I've never heard from them ever.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening.
Again, you swear from the testimony that you're about to give before this board is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please tell us your name, spell your last name, and your address.
I'm representing the family, so the name is Nav...
You need to tell us the name.
The, the name is Navantieri Carroll, N-A-V-A-N-T-I-E-R-I, and the property I'm speaking of is on Fort Plains Road, 57, Fort Plains Road. I don't know, I haven't looked at a map to see how many zoning areas you have, you have business, is there a secondary one and then residential?
No.
It's just...
Commercial to residential. Yes.
Okay, commercial, so I don't know whereabouts this pub, this property would be affected at all.
Do you know what the block and lot number is for your property?
137 is the block in Lot 44. It's next, if anybody remembers where the old trailer park used to be in there.
Yes.
This is like next to, in between where the lumberyard used to be.
Okay.
There's still, there's still houses, two, three houses here.
Yes.
I would just wanted to know about the, the water. Now, these houses, as far as I know, are all on well and septic?
Correct, but this is not, this is not proposing development, this is just designating the area. The redevelopment plan that would come after this would have infrastructure and would have recommendations for additional zoning, but this is not changing anything, only adding additional options to the property. So the infrastructure, the water, the sewer, I recognize there's an issue in this area. We all recognize that there's...
So there is no city water or, or septic on the front area of, of the commercial area right now?
It's not, no.
Right, okay.
So...
That would have to be addressed at the time.
Yes, it's, this is not the time for that, but this may provide opportunities at appropriate locations. We're not obviously looking to run it through the backyards of residences, but at appropriate locations to provide, if possible, because quite frankly, the sewer in this area is New Jersey American Water franchise, so it's not even the township. So there would have to be negotiations with the infrastructure purveyors, looking at, there's, there's the one application, I don't think it's a planning board application, that goes kind of like behind, alongside Home Depot, goes out the Fort Plains Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a really weirdly shaped lot. You also have like the Kentucky Fried Chicken area, so there are locations that may be appropriate for easements to bring infrastructure, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, okay. All right, that was it, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else? All right. I thought Parisi was gonna cut up here, but all right, closing it.
So that being said, I would recommend, I would request that the board act in the affirmative on the designation of this corridor as being an area in need of redevelopment.
Non-condemnation.
Non-condemnation. Thank you, Rich.
Non-condemnation, that's correct.
Yes.
Everybody understand what that means?
The township cannot...
All right. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
To non-condemnate.
Mr. Leggio and Mr. Greenfield.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Jen, master plan update?
We have nothing coming up.
Actually, on that topic, do we, do we need somebody appointed to the master plan committee?
I will tell you in one second. I believe you do, because I think Mr. Bavai was on that.
I do, I agree with you.
The master plan subcommittee was Brian Tannenhouse's chairman, Joe Cristiano, oh, that's last year, sorry.
No, that was last year. Dana?
Still on the record?
Nope.
Still on the record?
Nope.
Hold on, I probably have to...
Dr. Shit.
I'll tell you in one second. Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
While she's looking for that, Mr. Chair, I will say that there really is no need,
at least this month, to have a subcommittee meeting, because we really are not, we've recently done the master plan multiple times, and so we have time to, you know, once Eileen figures that out, to figure out...
Yeah, that's fine.
The membership, but there's no need to have a meeting this month.
Got it. And is there any reason for executive session?
It's, Joe Cristiano is the chairman, Mike Rebel and Paul Bavai were on the committee.
Okay, so we will need a member, think about that.
And that's for you to appoint, so...
Yeah, okay. So everybody, yeah? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah? All right, well, Mr. Leggio will be filling that spot.
Okay.
Thanks, John. No executive session, are we dealing with next week's meeting now?
Well, I'll just tell the board that next week, we had Victory Road on the agenda, and that is the only thing on the agenda, and they have asked to be carried, so I will be sending out a notice that the meeting will be canceled.
Okay.
So there is no meeting next week. Our next meeting will be June the 6th.
Just one follow-up on it. Does the applicant have to renotice for the next meeting?
According to Ron, as long as I put a notice on the website and a notice on the meeting room doors and the building, they do not have to renotice.